Okay, in accordance with the open public meetings at PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this special meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Public, for which it stands, my nation, your God.
Councilman Emberson?
Here.
Carl Hauck asks to be excused. Mahir Rafi?
Here.
Ed Chase? Jennifer Wagner?
Here.
Gustafan Manzery?
Yeah.
Paul Brown asks to be excused. Robert Thomas?
Yeah.
Sammy Shabon? And Chairman Orsini?
Here. Okay, so the way this meeting will work is we have a public comment period. We have the discussion on the zoning, which will not have its own public opening. So this public opening is the time for general planning comments. With that said, I make a motion to open to the public.
Slacker.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is open to the public. Here's a few ground rules. Two minutes per speaker. If you are going to say something exactly like the person ahead of you who said it and not add anything new, please consider not speaking. We will not discuss anything specific tonight other than whether this ordinance introduced by council and referred to the Planning Board is conforming to the master plan. So we will not discuss any specific properties, applications, pending applications, or anything like that. If you want to bring that up, you will not get a response from the board because our focus tonight is only to assess whether these ordinance conforms to the master plan. So with that, whoever wants to speak first, it looks like we have a candidate. Well, I don't think you would just swear, but we'll just...
Hi, my name is Kiki Amastascos and I live at 3204 Anclave Circle at Canal Walk. I also represent a new group. We're the Blue Shirts. We call ourselves the Citizens Warehouse Action Group and we are concerned, very concerned, about the evolution of, rather, the sprawl, okay? The sprawl of warehouses in Franklin Township. Franklin Township has been known and attracted many of us retirees to the Canal Walk community and to the other communities such as Renaissance and Somerset Run and others because of its beautiful countryside and because of the open space. And I know that term, open space, is a cliche, but we don't take it lightly, okay? So when you retire, when anybody retires, you think very carefully where your life savings are going to go and what kind of lifestyle you want to have once, you know, you've spent all your hard-earned money and where you want that money to be invested in. So for many of us, for most of us, we're not independently wealthy. We buy a condo or a house and that is pretty much the majority, if not all, of our savings. So you can understand how invested we are in the value of our property and the quality of the township where we live. Now, sometimes we get distracted. Some of us do go to Florida during the winter, not all of us, though. And now that we are paying attention because of how close the warehouses have been slowly approaching our community...
Ma'am, that's your two minutes.
Oh, it's two? I thought it was three. Okay. Okay, so here is my question. Is it true that Mettler's Road... First of all, I want to say that I fully support the ordinance that you're considering tonight. And my question to you all is, is it true that Mettler's Road is considered and is officially, has been officially designated by Franklin Township as a scenic driveway corridor?
Yeah, well, I...
And how that impacts or does not the decision that you're considering tonight and also future and other related decisions that you have to make?
All right, so let me answer that question.
Thank you.
The answer is yes. Mettler's is a scenic road. It doesn't affect what the board is considering tonight because, again, tonight the board is considering an ordinance that affects the district as a whole. It's not, this is not about a particular application. The way that the scenic corridor works also, just so you're aware, it doesn't change the permitted uses, but it does change things, it does affect things like setbacks, buffering in design requirements, and if, and again, not to not speak to any specific applications, but if there's an application on Mettler's Road, that application will be reviewed for consistency with the scenic corridor ordinance.
Okay.
But that, again, is not tonight, but that's the answer to your question about the scenic corridor ordinance.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I totally understand, and I'm not trying to find the back door to discuss the big elephant in the room, not at all. But there are other properties, though, that are considered in the current ordinance that you're considering tonight that are very close to Mettler's Road, no? Mettler's and Weston, is that so?
Well, I'm going to go through and show the properties that are involved.
Right, but there are some that are near Mettler's, I mean, by, next to Mettler's.
Again, I'm going to go through some of the properties that are involved, and some of them are on Mettler's and some are on Weston, both of which are scenic roads.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
My name is Bridget Brown. I live at 2108 Anclave Circle in, pause, the condominiums at Canal Walk. My question is, the government, the New Jersey government, I believe, has set out recommendations, is it, or rules, about the spread of warehouses in the state of New Jersey, and I think what you're discussing tonight is one of the ways that's going to help with that. Are there any other ways that you can help with the guidelines or recommendations or even landed? I don't think it's a landed setup. Is there anything else you can do in addition to that to stop this spread of the warehouses? Now, another question I have is, once this ordinance is passed, when it is passed, there will be a time delay before it actually becomes effect, I understand. What about the applications that are semi-complete, that have come before the Planning Board? Will they not have to comply with this or are they sort of grandfathered in because they got it in before the deadline? But thank you very much.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that. If an application was made before and if all of the required documents were submitted before the effective date, then they will have essentially beaten that clock on this ordinance. All applications that are submittals are made after that effective date will be subject to the ordinance. That's just the way the law works. It's not retroactive.
Yeah, and I would just say that to the other part of your question in terms of what else can be done, is a question that might be a good question to ask council. I know within the limits of the Planning Board, we've tried to deal with the traffic created by warehouses and making sure that there's signage that they take the correct route to 287 and not go down Demott Lane or through other things, but in, you know, beyond what we can do as a Planning Board, that's a good question to ask council when they have the second reading of this ordinance.
Hi, my name is Charles Summertola. I live at 86 Saratoga Court. And just, how many warehouse or how many building applications are in front of the Planning Board now in the various stages? Would any of that be covered by the ordinance? Did I understand that it would not because the ordinance didn't pass yet?
Again, I don't want to speak to any specific application. We do have a number of applications. I'm just going to speak generally. We have a number of applications and there's a small number that may beat that clock. May have submitted all of their required submittals before the effective date.
Okay, and one last question. Can you give us a number?
I honestly don't have a number off the top of my head. I mean, it's...
More than seven? Less than 10?
Yeah, I mean, the number that we have that we're reviewing, it's between five and 10, somewhere in that ballpark.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And that's, as far as, that's not the number that may or may not beat the clock. That's just the number of applications that are somewhere in the process.
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. Thank you for helping us learn tonight because most of us don't really know what this process is about. So what I'm asking, we felt like we slept on the job with particular warehouse buildings. How do you suggest that we, as citizens, become more aware when some atrocity is planned nearby? Excuse me. Because what we've been told, well, the application already came in. Well, where is that sweet spot that we could jump on it before the application comes in? Like, I read in one of the newspaper articles that there are pre-application meetings. So somebody knows before the application is actually put in. How can we, as residents, be aware of that? And then, that's my first question. Teach us how to be aware. The second one is, once this ordinance, if it's put into effect, there's always the variance that we hear. Well, yeah, it's put in, but there's variance. Why on earth would anyone permit a variance? When you've gone to this trouble, when you've taken recommendation from the state, why would you say, "But yeah, let's let them sneak it in anyway"? Excuse me, I have a thing.
I mean, I can answer that, but I think the board attorney could as well. I mean, the permission for variances comes from municipal, the municipal land use law. Applicants do have the right to apply for a variance for things that are not consistent with the ordinance. And there's, depending on the nature of the ordinance, there's different things they need to prove to get that variance. I don't, Jim, if you want to say anything more?
Yes, I will. In order to obtain a variance, an applicant has to demonstrate what we call the negative criteria. And there's two pros to the negative criteria. One is whether or not there'll be any substantial detriment to the public good, and the second pro is whether there'll be any substantial impairment to Franklin Township's zone plan or zoning ordinance. And I would say to you that when the council adopts an ordinance that sets a new zoning standard for an applicant to immediately thereafter come in and ask for a variance, at least in my opinion, they bear a very heavy burden of demonstrating that there will be no impairment to the zone plan because the council just went through the trouble of establishing that new standard.
I'll take a crack at your first question in terms of, you know, just check on the website, you know, the council, the Planning Board agendas, the council agendas. I think, you know, sometimes issues, whether they be, you know, any land use issues, start as a trickle and you don't really think much of it, and then, and then it reaches maybe some critical mass. But there really isn't a sweet spot, as Jim and Mark have both said. You know, applications come in, they're not, Mark is the planning zoning officer, determines which board hears them, based on the, you know, legal purview of each board. And so until it's deemed complete and put in our mailboxes, we don't see it. So really, just checking the council agendas and the Planning Board and Zoning Board agendas are really the best way. And the other thing is, get off of Facebook. Comments on Facebook are fun, you know, get into a little friendly banter, but it doesn't do anything. You have to be here at the meeting. And don't do petitions because we can't accept them. We need to hear you live in legal testimony. The applicant has to be able to cross-examine. That would be my...
Last thing I'll say, too, is the applications are put on the website as they're deemed complete. So both the Planning Board and Zoning Board, the plans and the reports are up on the website so you can review them, usually months before it's heard before one of the boards.
My name is Shirley Tolman and I live at 57 Tolman Lane in Somerset, which is, of course, Canal Walk. And I'm kind of new to this Planning Board meeting. I don't know that I've been to one before. Mark, I've met you, I believe, after a council meeting. I assume we have an attorney here?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure who you are in the middle.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm the board chairman.
You are? Well, I'm pleased to meet you. Is that Michael?
Yes.
Michael?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I do support what we're going to do here, what you're going to do here tonight, although I have to add that it's a bit too little, too late. I'm not wearing the shirt because I wanted to. I'm wearing it because I'm not happy about what you've done or allowed to happen. And I'm wondering if there's one person sitting up here in front of me who has direct responsibility for Canal Walk. Do you have districts or areas, like or a council, or do you all work as a group?
No, there's no wards like council has wards, no.
And if I wanted to understand, as Mark was starting to explain here, this very convoluted, in my mind, process, where do I see the process that you follow from the start? Maybe that's an informal start. A developer like Link Logistics sends a lawyer, sends a representative, one of their execs, out to the area. They've decided there's a piece of property there they're interested in, and do they have an informal meeting with the council or with the Planning Board? Or is it only formal once the application is submitted? How do I find this out? I'm very interested in knowing the process in case I want to be considered for one of your seats someday.
Well, I mean, there is a formal process, and the formal process is laid out, again, pretty much everything this board does and the zoning board does is laid out in the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. So, you know, the formal process is the hearing before, you know, culminates really with the hearing before the board. And that's the participation that this board has, and that's the participation that the public is invited to participate in that public hearing process. As far as an applicant, an applicant makes an application. Staff reviews it, makes comments on it. There may be some amendments to it based on staff comments. Eventually, they make their hearing before the board, and the board and the members of the public have an opportunity to comment on it as well. Typically, probably nine times out of 10, there's definitely amendments made to applications at the board hearing based on input of the public and the board members.
Mark, at what point did this warehouse issue that we at Canal Walk and others are so concerned about, because we're not the only residents within close proximity, you know that, we have, what, over 500 homes across the street in Summerfield with young children, buses coming to and fro during school time? At what point did you, did it dawn on you or did you realize that it would be this controversial?
Personally, I'm not sure this is about my personal perspective on this issue. I mean, what...
But it always comes into play. I mean, I worked for 30 years for GM, and there was always a little personal aspect that came into, you know, those decisions. When did, let me open it to all of you.
You have over your two minutes, Ms.
Yeah, no, well, I'll just, I'll just say, I'll just say this. It's a hard question to answer. I mean, like Mark said, we have a formal process. I don't think there's anything, you know, nefarious about it. Any applicant has to follow the municipal land use law. All of the township professionals, from engineering to fire safety to Sewerage Authority, engineering, all review the application, all make lots and lots of comments that go back to the applicant. And before an application ever gets to us, it's gone through quite a bit of work to conform because a lot of applications come in and they're far away from what we ultimately hear. So that's the work of the township professionals, and they do a great job at it because none of us know, you know, the dimensions that a detention basin should be or something like that, but engineering does. And they make sure those applications are conforming, and we have a consulting engineer that also reviews the plans. So, you know, I think it's a pretty straightforward process. It is complicated. New Jersey land use law, and Bob and I and Ted Chase have been here for, oh, you guys have it on me, I've been here for 20 years or so, which is hard to believe. Both of these guys have been here for well longer than that, and we still, we're still learning all the time, and things change all the time, too. So I don't think there's, I don't think, like I said before, I think, you know, you look at, and something comes to a critical mass, but, you know, in terms of any land use, and you say, "Okay, well, maybe things then need to change." But I don't think it's any more deep than that.
There's a human aspect, at least from what I can tell, from what you're saying, was really not considered. And that is probably the most important part, the quality of the life that you provide to the residents, not the tax base. Yeah, we need tax base. I mean, we're adults here, we understand budgets. But the human aspect, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just make a comment to that?
Sure.
I just wanted to address a little bit. So I joined the Planning Board a couple of years ago, and, you know, I share, as a resident, your sentiments about the warehouse, right? But when you sit here, like it's been said before, the land use, the law, the ordinance, they have to be followed. So that little aspect that you said, there has to be a human element. I may have a human element, but I have to follow the law, right? So there's that human element. It cannot come into play because you have to follow the law. So I just wanted to assure you that, you know, it doesn't matter what I feel, but you have to follow the due diligence.
Unless the law doesn't support the right thing, we have bad laws on a national level, international level, local level, we have bad laws. Not all laws are right. They're not all correct. And what I'm saying is, who questioned that the residents would be hurt? I see the backup from the Amazon situation already. It's not being controlled. Semis are idling, closing off one whole lane because they can't get into the parking lot. I experienced it the other day on my way to volunteer work. It's only going to get worse. And to allow that land to be zoned as it was, fair game for another warehouse, that's inexcusable in my mind. That's not a good thing.
(inaudible) Juan, 28 J's Corner. Mr., I can't, I can't see that far. Mr. Orsini?
Yes.
Hi, very good. You said something that was very important, and just on a global basis, you used the word operatively as having to follow the rules and when an application is complete. So I'm asking all of you board members, because all of you have the power to change things for the better. There is certain steps that are required in an application, but I think you're putting the cart before the horse when you have subject to's and approve a project and say it's complete subject to NJDEP or DRCC or any of these other permits being in place. What I'm asking you tonight is to change that before the ordinance is in, and there's no, there's no rule, but you can change the way that you take an application in such that those are requirements prior to accepting an application that is complete. That's what I'm asking you guys to do tonight.
So let me answer that question. When an application is deemed complete, it's deemed complete per Franklin Township standards, for Franklin Township departments, our engineering, our sewer, our traffic, our fire...
It's that all the required documents have been submitted?
It does not depend on what outside agencies may do. However, that doesn't mean the applicant doesn't have to get Somerset County Planning Board or Soil Conservation or DRCC approval. They may well have to do that, and there have been instances where after the application has been heard by DRCC, it has had to come, or some other, they've made sufficient enough changes, they have to come back here. That has happened on occasion. So it will not affect ultimately, you know, the applicant's standard to actually meet all of the requirements from outside agencies, but we can hear the application before that is done. But it won't affect their need to comply with it.
Here, the application. I'm just saying that it's not complete. How can an application be fully completed if you don't have permits?
It's complete for Franklin...
But doesn't Franklin Township require those permits to be approved?
I think you're confusing the word, sir. I think you're confusing the word completeness with approved.
Yeah.
I mean, completeness just means all the materials have been submitted so that the application could be properly reviewed by staff and by the board and that a hearing can occur. That doesn't change the fact that the board still then has to subsequently approve it after a hearing. It also doesn't change the fact, as the chairman explained, that all outside approvals still need to be obtained before they build. Completeness is an exercise, if there's 15 traffic reports, did they submit 15 traffic reports? Did they submit the 25 copies of the plans? Then those plans get reviewed in terms of the substance. Reports get prepared. Sometimes plans get changed based on those comments. In the meantime, the applicants are most likely working with getting their outside approvals. At some point during that process, they go before the board, and before they put a shovel on the ground, all of the board's comments, all the board's conditions, all the staff's comments, all the outside approvals need to be in place. Overall, that's the process.
But it just doesn't make any sense to me that although the township, it meets all the township requirements except for the permits, and if the permits require changes to the size, to the location, to the egresses because of certain environmental impacts or drainage problems, et cetera, et cetera, that the application cannot, by definition, have been approved.
No, again, you're confusing...
You're mixing approved and complete. If you apply for a job and you fill out your application, your application's complete. Doesn't mean you have the job. Think of it that way. Your application's complete. You have provided all the reports. Doesn't mean it's going to get approved.
No, if I don't, if I apply for a job and I don't supply my driver's license, and that was one of the requirements, then I have not completed my application.
But you got...
That's the same as adding a permit into this equation.
There's a ponderous checklist of requirements that an applicant has to submit to be an application to be deemed complete. That does not mean it's going to be approved. That just means it's complete enough to be evaluated by township staff and ultimately be heard by the boards.
And when he says evaluated by the township staff, he doesn't mean that the township staff is approving the application or disapproving it. staff is approving the application or disapproving it. It's simply a process of the, there's no, the application comes in and it's got requirements to meet in order for us to hear it. If, if he, if that applicant hasn't submitted that paperwork, it doesn't come to this board, we don't hear it.
But, but can't you see the irony in this? Is that if you hear it and then, let's say, more fetch, but NJDEP does not allow a permit, you've wasted completely all of your time and efforts, right?
That's not necessarily true. And, and usually the reports that you're talking about are the ones that are already submitted with the application or there is such a backup that they're in process and whether we approve the application or not, if it's an NJDEP issue, if that's not approved by NJDEP, our approval means nothing, absolutely nothing. So is it a better waste of time to waste half a hearing and say, go someplace else and come back when you get a DEP certificate? Or do we hear the application out and if, in the case of DEP, it doesn't come back as an approval or whatever it is they need, then it doesn't count. It's not an approval.
But we're talking, but we're talking about this in relation to this ordinance. You're allowing people to shove in applications that may approve, may, may be conditional on other things happening and meeting your minimal requirements of a checklist.
Can you give a specific example concerning this ordinance?
Well, you're not giving me any specific examples as to putting in an application. I, I think putting in an application yesterday and, and I hear that this ordinance is going to be approved, I'm going to make my darndest to get all of my paperwork in even though I know I have a problem with environmental.
Okay, we're, we're starting to go in circular, so I'm going to cut this off. I'm just going to say this, um, there, there, there is a legal process and the applicant, application is deemed complete, it can be evaluated by the township staff and ultimately heard by the board. Now, if applicant is foolish enough to have, say, an egress on 27 and hasn't talked to the state DOT, well, they're paying lawyers a lot of money for nothing and that's on them. We, we can hear it. We'll have, you'll be happy to hear it, but they still have to go out and get those outside. I don't know a better way to say it, but I think for in the interest of time, um, let's, 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 let's move on.
All I'm asking the board is to consider, put your minds together and consider doing things for the community, not for the builders. And what you're doing now in allowing for all of these applications to get in is doing it to the benefit of builders and not to the residents of this town.
But we have no control over that. If a person has control of a property, they have a right to put the application in. We, we can't stop anybody from, once they submit the paperwork and the township staff decides that they have completed all of the steps in the paperwork, we have a legal obligation not only to hear it, but to act within forty-five days.
I don't disagree with you. My, my point is.
Then your issues with the state of New Jersey and the municipal land use law, not the Franklin Planning Board, we have no power to, to go against the state land use law. That's what it is.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's, let's move on since we want to give other people opportunity if they might want to speak.
Hello, but for the, all right. But for the last thirty-three years, I've done office deals on Davidson Avenue and all the spots that where the office buildings were built back in the eighties. I totally sympathize with your group, all right, to have a, um, trucks driving through my.
Sir, you have to talk into the mic or they can't hear you.
Right, as everyone else. Um, what I would like to know, when you give the presentation, when you enacted that change to, in the B1 to take an office building to an industrial building, was that part of the master plan? And, um, when you did that master, what was the thought? And then, again, I understand there's variants going through, but you're affecting other properties that are on Davidson Ave and near a, um, an intersection right off of 287. I'd like to understand how you figured that out from your master plan standpoint and how this ordinance affects, because I don't know if every one of you know, but the, all the office space on Davidson Ave is particularly empty. Okay? And there's a reason for that, okay? No one's going back to the office. So I sympathize with the board here and they actually probably did one of the smartest things that any township did, is allowed some of these in, uh, older office buildings to get replaced by warehouses, but not in neighborhoods.
All right, so if you want to have a discussion with that, talk to, talk to.
Talk to the board. Yes, I'm sorry. But so I'd like to, when you give your presentation, talk a little bit about what that master plan was that you put in place when you did that B1 zone change.
I'll, I'll speak to it now. I'm not going to change my presentation, but, but, I mean, the, a few years ago, as you, as you alluded to, the township council amended the zoning where the lands that were previously in the M1 and M2 zones, which were light industrial zones that permitted light industrial and warehousing, um, the M1 and the M2 and the corporate business zone, which permitted the, the office buildings, those were all merged into a new zone called Business and Industry that, which basically, really, the main thing that did, as far as the M1 and M2 zones, not much really changed, particularly in terms of permitted uses. Light industrial and warehousing was permitted in the M1 and M2, continued forward in the BI zone. The main thing that that ordinance did, as this gentleman alluded to, was the corporate business zone, um, was again incorporated into this new BI zone and warehouses became permitted in the corporate business zone, um, where previously warehouses and light manufacturing uses became permitted in what was the former corporate business zone. So that allowed some of these, um, you know, low vacancy office buildings to be put to a different use. Uh, and there was a master plan amendment associated with that. There was an ordinance introduced and went to the planning board with a similar, um, discussion, obviously, for that ordinance, like we do with every land use ordinance that's introduced. Um, I mean, that was the process.
Yeah, and I mean, it was consistent with the master plan because as you astutely pointed out, who wants a bunch of vacant office buildings that ultimately, you know, tax abatements and, and then why open up new ground when you already have impervious coverage? Why not repurpose it? That advances the purpose of the municipal land use law, so.
We amended the master plan first and then the zoning ordinance.
Before, man, before you speak again, let's give anybody an opportunity who hasn't spoken yet to please speak.
Robert Schmidt, 539 Elizabeth Avenue. As I live on Elizabeth Avenue, I have some observations and concerns to make here about the increase in traffic on the street. Um, and I believe, you know, based upon my observations, that a greatly amount of that increased truck traffic relates to the new warehouses. In fact, on May 12th, I trained one of my motion activated, uh, security cameras on the street and had no problem counting over forty semis going by in, in one day. And I suspect now, a few months later, it's going to be even worse and projected into the future, I don't like what I'm seeing. The increase in truck traffic presents, you know, two obvious problems. One is, is noise and the, the other is, is public safety. Noise problem from the trucks is really bad. You can hear some of them coming up from like a mile away. It definitely affects the residents' quality of life and may diminish property values as well. Who'd want to buy something when their semi tractor trailer is cruising by fifty feet from your front door? Public safety issue is perhaps even more obvious. Just picture a semi T-boning a minivan coming out of Colonial Park or, or the Franklin High School. Yes, the Franklin High School has, has a traffic light, but Colonial Park, Howe Fields, uh, the golf course, none of them do. People pulling out of them are always at risk of getting T-boned. So less trucks would be good, both from a noise standpoint and a public safety standpoint. In my mind, and I suspect this can be proven, if less warehouses would result in trucks. So I'm certainly all for the, any ordinance or any mechanism reducing warehouses. However, it's also plainly obvious that at least to some degree, the genie's already out of the bottle, uh, given that I have all those semis trekking up and down my street every day. Probably outside the scope of this meeting, but I'd really like you to think about that as a problem, um, what, what can be done to, to remediate it. Some things that might be obvious is reduce the speed limit or enforce the speed limit, put in low traffic lights. Yeah, I know they're outside the scope of this meeting, but, but these problems are a derivative effect of the warehouses that then result in more trucks. So I would just request that you think about it and try to take action to minimize the amount of traffic that finds its way away from the warehouses and into the back roads of Franklin Township. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else, is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we hear you for a second and final time?
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity and I apologize for interrupting the gentleman, um, who was speaking. I was out of order. I want to go back however, to the point that the gentleman was raising, meaning the empty corporate offices, um, in, in and around the area that the gentleman was referring to Davidson and, and the other nearby streets. And I understand the, the economic shifts that have taken place and I know that your job is not easy. Um, you know, you're trying, from a economic development perspective, you're trying to attract, um, you know, new businesses and so originally you planned to have, to allow all these corporate buildings to be built and then COVID happens and people start working from home and, and, and the buildings start getting empty. Okay? So, and then people start buying online and they want everything the next day and Amazon Prime and Amazon, you know, gets richer and, and we all get more trucks because now we need not corporate buildings and offices, but warehouses. I totally get it, but I want to go back to the gentleman's point, which is the empty corporate buildings. Does it make sense? And if you could just explain to us why in Franklin Township, we have a large, a very large number of empty corporate buildings just sitting there, while at the same time, we are allowing warehouses to be built in open space, next to our schools, next to retirement communities with all the results of pollution and traffic and so forth. So my question is this, is it possible for this board to make it a priority as you're rezoning? And let's also remind ourselves that the state planning commission has requested, unfortunately did not demand municipalities, right, to manage the warehouse sprawl more effectively. I was very sorry. I think the state chickened out, but that's my personal opinion, okay? But a, 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 a recommendation from the state is still weighs, it weighs heavily on municipal governments, right? We definitely don't want to be in violation of this new important state recommendation on such an important issue. So is it totally out of the scope of logic to think that for all these huge number of new applications coming in for warehouses, you can first ask the applicants to consider using, reusing, what's the word that some people say? Repurpose, thank you. Repurpose the empty buildings. Get rid of the, the walls and the furniture and turn them into warehouses so that the empty properties get to be reused and we preserve our spaces and the, our students can breathe clean air on Elizabeth Avenue and our retirees will not die ten years prematurely. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just say adaptive reuse is always the goal and it can be done. Unfortunately, I, I don't know of any developer who would, uh, who could, who could really do what you want. They would raise the building and they would build a new one. So that's, that's an economic driver that they may look at and say it's better to start from scratch. So, um, that, that is hard to control, but I mean, it's right in the master plan that reuse, um, whether it's, you know, housing, you know, dilapidated house and we get Habitat for Humanity, that's how we satisfied some of our COA obligation, um, would be Habitat for Humanity coming in and, 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 and build a new house. That's, that's a, that's a bedrock tenet of the master plan is either adaptive reuse or, or using things that are, that are already, you know, already have impervious coverage.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just speak to that briefly too, which is the ordinance that we spoke about a few minutes ago does exactly that, proactively. Proactively, the township saw that there was an issue with office vacancies and that was, that was pre-COVID. Um, you know, saw that trend coming and allowed office buildings, the, the, basically the office zone, um, to be changed over and allowed light manufacturing and warehouse uses in that. We do have some applications, um, we had, this board has seen a few, um, of those type applications. Uh, I expect you will see some more, uh, in that corporate business zone, former corporate business zone. Uh, and as the chairman stated, they don't, you don't reuse an office building for warehousing. I mean, they, they, they tear it down and they build a new warehouse in its place.
Dan? No. Um, is there any chance you could put a moratorium on warehouse building? I see, I read an article, the Township Committee of the Township of Mansfield Burlington County. In the ordinance, it says the county finds that additional warehouse development should not be permitted in the township. And that was approved. So would it make sense to just stop, take a breath, figure out what you're trying to accomplish with all this crazy building? I know it came on faster in COVID, everybody got excited about all the income, but now it's getting out of control. Is a moratorium a possibility?
Um, just, just one thing to note, that's an important distinction that you should all appreciate. We, through the master plan or through a ordinance such as this, the council by law has to refer to the planning board for conformance with the master plan. The planning board can recommend zoning changes, only council can pass them. At the end of the day, the buck stops with council. Um, you know, and, and that's an important distinction because as was alluded to earlier, we all on this board appreciate that, um, none of you, like none of us, at least when we started before board service, was born into planning. Mark's the only certified professional planner on this board because that's his job. The rest of us learn on the job. And, um, over the twenty, thirty, forty or fifty years of experience, we've gotten fairly good at it. Um, but, but that's an important distinction because what's the natural tendency? Oh, the zoning board. Well, they, they, they must be the board that does the zoning, right? It's called the zoning board, but they're not. So it, it, just realize that council at the end of the day is the only one that has the ability to pass zoning changes. We can recommend them all we want. We could say, well, zone the total township, RR5, doesn't mean council's going to pass it. So just, just a little, just a little planning lesson there. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close? Seeing new takers, and I move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to close carries. Mark has a presentation on the ordinance and its conformance with the master plan, so I'll turn it over to him.
First, I'll say, there is documentation on the website that speaks to this ordinance. Obviously, the ordinance itself is online. We also have provided a frequently asked questions. We tried to anticipate what some of the questions may be, both from people who own property in the BI zone and those that are around its periphery. You can find that on, this is our website, which is Franklin TWPNJ.org. If you go to Departments, there's a drop-down menu. You can go to Land Development and Zoning, and on there, there's this frequently asked questions. I think clicking on that printable copy, again, that has a number of questions, a number of maps, some of which I'll be going over tonight in my presentation. But some of this stuff goes into stuff that's not necessarily master plan related, it's more geared towards what if I have property? What if I have an existing warehouse? What if I want to build a warehouse? What if I'm within 200 feet? What does this mean for me? Those type questions, again, that's on the website, so you can view them, view that when you wish. So I'm going to go over the, I'm going to give a brief overview of what the ordinance does, and I'm going to refer to some of the maps that are in. I prepared a memo to the board dated yesterday that evaluated the ordinance against the master plan. Ultimately, my finding was that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, and I'll go over why I came to that conclusion. First, this is the map, this is the BI zone that is in the, I'll call it the 287 area to orient everybody. This, if you follow my cursor, this is 287. This is Weston Canal. Just so you know what this red boundary is, that is the, that is the boundary of the Business and Industry Zone. So that's Weston Canal. This is Randolph. Schoolhouse going across here. Elizabeth Avenue, cutting up the middle. Here's Davidson. Pierce. World's Fair Drive, Easton Avenue, and the interchange. What's surrounding the BI zone, almost in its entirety, is residential zones. I know a lot of the folks here are from Canal Rock, but Canal Rock is hardly the only residential zone that abuts the BI zone. In fact, pretty much around, probably 90% of its periphery, it adjoins a residential zone, and this is not something necessarily unique to Franklin. You have to draw the boundary somewhere, and a lot of times those boundaries, the industry zone and the residential zones come together. So what this map is showing is, again, the red is the outline of the Business and Industry Zone. The main, one of the main portions or things that this ordinance would do is require a 500-foot separation between warehouse development and a property in the residential zone. So this map pretty clearly demonstrates through red and green, red is properties in the BI zone that are within 500 feet of a residential zone, so future warehouse development would not be permitted in those red properties. And the green are areas in the BI zone where warehouse development would continue to be permitted. That is the, again, what I'll call the 287 area BI zone. And then there's another area, and I'll call this the Veronica Avenue BI zone. Again, to orient everybody, this is 27. This is Veronica Avenue. This is Hamilton Street. There's a few areas along Hamilton Street that are in the BI zone. You have Commerce Drive, Clyde, and Roosevelt. The same thing with the other map. The red is the outline, the boundary of the BI zone. Red is the areas where future warehousing would not be permitted, and green is areas, properties where they would continue to be permitted. If you can kind of just eyeball it or visualize that this 500-foot boundary or separation requirement, I should say, affects this zone more solely because it's smaller and more narrow, so it has a bigger impact on this area. I'll go through some of the other changes. I'm going to refer to the maps, because I think the maps, pictures tells a thousand words better than words. So this is some of the zone changes. Again, to orient everybody, this is Metlers, on north-south. This is Weston. This is the high school. This is the existing BI zone along Schoolhouse. Again, this is Metlers. This is Canal Rock. And then south of Weston is primarily the A zone, but there's a little bit of property that's in the ROL zone. This is the, now it's a school. It used to be an Exxon building, and this is, now we're formally called Huntington Life Sciences, but it's a laboratory use. This is undeveloped on this corner. Again, that's on the southwest corner of Weston and Metlers. Again, that's in the research office laboratory zone, which permits relatively high-intensity research office and laboratory use. That's what ROL stands for. On the northeast corner of Weston and Metlers is a large piece of property that is also in the ROL zone. So what the ordinance is proposing to do is the property that's on the northeast corner is proposed to be rezoned from ROL to RR3. RR3 is a low-density residential zone, and happens to be the zoning of these surrounding properties. So the zoning, the ordinance would put this in the same zoning character, same zoning category as properties that abuts it. Similarly, this area down in here is proposed to be rezoned to A, which is also a low-density residential zone, and again, similar to the zoning of surrounding properties. These are just maps that show, this is more detailed maps showing the block and lots of the properties I just discussed. And then the other area of rezoning is in the Business and Industry Zone. This is Elizabeth Avenue. Down here is the high school. This is Somerset Run. This is industrial development in the BI zone, and Schoolhouse slash New Brunswick is up here. And this area, and I'll explain in a few minutes some of the rationale for these different rezonings, but what's proposed is this is R40, which is single-family one-acre lots. That's the zoning further down Elizabeth, so the proposal is to essentially bring that zoning up and rezone this from Business and Industry to R40. And then lastly, there's a number of, not necessarily housekeeping, but changes to clarifications and modifications to things like buffering setbacks, et cetera, that all are intended to provide further protection of residential uses when they're in proximity to not just warehousing, but light industrial development in general. I'm going to go through the evaluation of the consistency with the master plan. Again, it's, my finding is that it's not inconsistent with the master plan. There are, I found basically one main goal and set of objectives that speak to this. The main goal is encourage commercial and industrial development in areas with access to major regional highways and in established areas. Locate major employment and traffic drawing uses in areas where they will least impact residential neighborhoods. But then there's another one that is, balances that somewhat maintain the size of industrial districts to ensure adequate space for light industry and warehousing. And then there's a similarly worded recommendation in the master plan, maintain sufficient areas of light industrial zoning to ensure a varied tax base. The area available for industrial development has been significantly reduced via the approval of several large-scale senior residential developments along New Brunswick Road, Schoolhouse Road, and Randolph Road. So that 2006 master plan was basically acknowledging the fact that Canal Rock, Somerset Run's Renaissance, and Sterling Point came in, and that significantly reduced the area of the town that was zoned for industry. The 2006 master plan basically said, just let's just be careful. We have to make sure we maintain a large enough area for light industry. So with respect to those goals and objectives and that recommendation, I offer the following: intent and effect of the ordinance is consistent with the objective to locate warehouse and its traffic-producing characteristics where they will reduce impact to residential areas. This would be, would be accomplished by permitting warehouse development, or permitting warehouse development would be largely concentrated in the industrial area in closest proximity to 287, which would reduce the traversing of warehouse-related truck traffic through residential areas of the township, and the 500, the type of that, but 500-foot separation would reduce potential impacts to residential zones by requiring them to be located further away. The township ordinance would remain consistent with the objective/recommendation that the township maintains sufficient areas of industrial districts to ensure adequate space for light industry and warehousing. Come to that conclusion based on the fact that there is still going to be 4.8 square miles, or roughly 10% of the township, would still be in the BI zone. Within that remaining BI zone, about 2.2 square miles would still be permitted to have warehousing. And I'm going to refer again to figures seven and eight. So the combination of the outline, again, this is that red outline of the existing, what the resulting BI zone would be, that area outlined in red, and that are still a sizable area of the township and provide sufficient land for light industry and warehousing, which again, is one of the main objectives of the master plan. And then again, the areas in green totals about 2.2 square miles of land, still pretty significant portion of the township, which makes this ordinance consistent with those goals and objectives. Okay, so now I'm going to speak to the specific rezonings. So the property that's on the northeast corner, the property that's proposed to be rezoned from RR3, from, I'm sorry, ROL to RR3, I bring up a number of reasons why, in my opinion, it's consistent with good planning principles and the master plan. Obviously, as we know, those properties are located on Weston Road and Metlers Road. They're both particularly unsuitable for large-scale traffic-inducing development due to their width and geometry. It is not in the sewer service area, I'm sorry, it is within the sewer service area, but it's not served by public sewer. The nearest public sewer is a significant distance away in Schoolhouse Road. As was mentioned tonight, it's not in this memo, but it is important to note that it is within, along a scenic corridor. There are sensitive land areas in the form of residential development in Franklin High School in close proximity. It's also in the rural slash environmentally sensitive planning area on the state plan map. So for those reasons, it's proposed to be rezoned to the RR3 zone, consistent with zoning of adjoining properties. Lastly, so there was a 2006 master plan, and then the township, or the planning board, I should say, did the required reexamination of the master plan in 2016, and there was a specific recommendation about that, about that property. It says the potential development of the site in accordance with the ROL zoning may be limited due to potential for limited market demand for research and laboratory development. Rejoining roads, Metlers and Weston are unsuited for traffic-intensive development. Further, while located in the sewer service area, the nearest sewer is in Schoolhouse Road. The master plan should investigate alternative zoning. So that was recommended in the 2016 master plan. This ordinance will apply that alternative zoning to the site, as suggested in the 2016 master plan. And for the various reasons stated above, and for the various reasons stated above, it's supported and it's consistent with the zoning of surrounding properties. I'm going to move on to the properties south of Metlers. A lot of these is the same reason. They're both on Weston and Metlers. We've discussed the characteristics of those roads. There's sensitive land uses in the form of residential development to the north. It's along two scenic corridors. It's in the rural environmentally sensitive planning area on the policy map of the state development redevelopment plan, and for all of those reasons, it's proposed to be put into the A zone, again, consistent with the zoning of surrounding areas. Okay, so the 2016 master plan did address, to the degree that there are two existing developments, the Huntington Life Science and the Exxon Building, which is now actually a school, the 2006 master plan did have some language about that, and the fact that it did have existing uses, and it encouraged that, indicated that the, that the ROL zoning should remain, quote, "to encourage continued use and future reuse of these properties as they're currently developed," and to allow future expansion. The 2016 master plan didn't really talk about the developed nature. It talked about more of the fact that the portion closest to Metlers is undeveloped, and similar to the property on the northeast corner, recommended that the township evaluate alternative zoning. So similar to the recommendation, again, about the property in the northeast corner, this ordinance is consistent with the recommendation in the 2016 master plan, that the undeveloped portion, you know, that that zoning be up, that alternative zoning be considered and put in place. And then I'm going to speak to Elizabeth Avenue. Again, this is the area that's in the BI zone and is proposed to be put into the R40 zone. Some of these properties have been, a handful, two or three have had industrial proposals. The bulk are still residentially used. This is somewhat unique to the BI zone in that it is the only area that I'm aware of in the BI zone that is not served by public sewer. Again, the public sewer is up on Schoolhouse Road, and this zone extends a good deal to the south without public sewer available. A lot of the land that is within this area is environmentally sensitive, including NJDEP wetlands, which suggests that zoning, less intensive zoning would be more appropriate. There are, again, sensitive land uses in proximity to this area, Franklin High School and Somerset Run. And again, as I've explained before, the proposal is to extend the R40 zone to the north to encompass this area. As far as the other recommendations or proposals in the ordinance, again, the buffering, the adjustments to the buffering requirements, setbacks, et cetera, those are, every single one of those is intended to be more protective and more restrictive, if you will, of light industrial and warehouse development, so those just by their very nature are consistent with various recommendations, goals, and objectives of the master plan. I'm sorry, I know it's very technical, and I try not to go through every single word in my report. The board has it. We are going to, I'm going to be putting it on the website. If any of the board members have any questions of my report, obviously, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mark, thank you. You did a fantastic job, actually. Very, very clear presentation. Just open it up to the board if we have, if the board has any questions for Mark.
I have a question.
Yes, Sammy.
Can you scroll down to there? I think that's the one. While we maintain the 500-foot barrier or buffer for our own township, is that, is that also in effect for our neighboring township? Insofar as that buffer? in effect for our neighboring township insofar as that buffer on the edge over there? Is that also there for that?
Which edge over?
That top right corner, I guess.
Over in here?
Yeah. Is there any part that would affect our neighboring town in any way with not having that buffer? Or did we account for that?
Okay, just if I can understand, is it, did we take into account the zoning of the surrounding community?
Because what we're doing is we're 500 feet back from residential, correct?
Yes.
So I'm just accounting for our own borders and the borders of our town. Just wanted to.
In other words, southbound border.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we couldn't do anything that affects another municipality in terms of our zoning, so it would be, have to be more than 500 feet away from the southbound border, right?
Is the question, does this affect what can happen in southbound, southbound or another community, or vice versa?
Just for us, that are we, is it also in effect for them?
No, no, no. This only, this only affects what can occur in Franklin. I mean, every municipality has its own zoning, so this only affects Franklin Township zoning.
Yeah. I think looking at the map now, I see that, I couldn't see it in the black and white, but I think I see it clear enough that it's not, that there's enough of a buffer there. Another question is with our schools, is there any buffer for those? Are there any that would be in this? I'm just thinking of like Elizabeth Avenue School. I'm not sure where that falls on this map. I think it's, is there any buffer that would be around that?
Well, the, for the purpose of this ordinance, there's not. You know, the council, the direction from council was to get an ordinance in place, and that I think it's understood from the council that there may be some fine-tuning of the ordinance. I wouldn't be surprised. I think the council is going to be, they haven't already, is going to ask the planning board to evaluate this further. There may be some amendments to that that address issues like that.
It would be my recommendation to add that 500-foot buffer to any school that would perhaps be in the zone as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Sammy. All right, seeing the board questions.
Mr. Chairman, you've all heard Mark's report. He repeatedly indicated in his professional opinion as a planner that the changes in the ordinance is consistent with the goals and objectives and recommendations in our master plan and our most recent reexamination. And it came, it allowed him to come to what I call the minimum conclusion, which is required in the statute, that what is being proposed here is not inconsistent with the master plan. However, you are permitted to go one step further, and based upon Mark repeatedly saying that it's consistent, you can conclude, okay, the higher standard that what is being proposed here is consistent with the master plan.
Thank you, Jim. So our task now is to offer a motion of our findings of the ordinance and whether it is consistent with the master plan. So I will offer such a motion that ordinance 4371-22 and the zoning amendments suggested therein is entirely consistent with the purpose and intent of the Franklin Township master plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make, there were some suggestions made about some potential changes to this. What I would suggest is, again, there are going to be, there is going to be a process to fine-tune this later and that those be considered at that point.
I would agree, that's the better approach. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can offer a supplement to your motion, that this board recommends the adoption of that ordinance to the council.
I will amend my motion to include that language that the planning board of the township of Franklin recommends to Franklin Township, that this ordinance be adopted.
That's now the motion, I second it.
If I, if I may, so I hear Mark's point. Is this the point where we can also put our recommendations as part of that motion? Or should we put our recommendations? Because the point that I brought up, does that go on this, or should we do that as a separate?
It will come as an amendment. I mean, this was, this was, again, like I said, the council actually has the ultimate authority in zoning. They asked us to look at this ordinance that they introduced. All land use ordinances the council introduces must be referred to the planning board for consistency with the master plan. That's exactly what we're doing tonight. Should they wish to amend it, it will come back.
So what I would suggest is, I would suggest that the official motion remain as is, but I think the minutes that the board adopts can speak to some of these issues that the planning board may want to evaluate in the future.
Certainly. I think that's a good approach. So yeah, my motion, my motion stands as amended, yeah.
Second, stands.
Mr. Chairman, the board.
Councilman in Barson.
Yes.
Kira Rafik.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Sammy Shavan.
Yes.
And Chairman Mercini.
Yes.
Motion's adopted.
Okay, and with that, I offer a motion to adjourn.
Second that also.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.